I now open the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome all citizens here tonight to witness this meeting and participate in it possibly. And there are, we'll move into items from council. One thing that I would like to know, Mr. Reese, is our generator complete at the water plant?
Yes, sir. The generator at the service water treatment plant was installed about two weeks ago. And then late last week, it went through the startup and commissioning, so it is up and running, 100% ready to go.
Okay, thank you very much. That's good news. I get asked that question from time to time. And now if Joel could come up perhaps and talk a little bit about Boot Fest?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me here this evening. Yes, we would like to invite all of the public to come to downtown Victoria for Victoria's largest free festival. Boot Fest will be taking place this weekend in Deleon Plaza, Friday, October 4th and Saturday, October 5th. Friday, it's 6:00 PM until 11:30 PM. Saturday, 10:00 AM until 11:00 PM. A variety of great entertainers will be bringing back the Rock Night with some great rock tribute acts on Friday night on the main stage, and then the country acts, Texas Country Acts on Saturday night on the main stage. We also have some great local talent on the bandstand in Deleon Plaza, the Free Kids Corral both days. The Car, Truck and Motorcycle Show will be back on Saturday, the Ditar Healthcare System 5K in the morning, some great Western crafters, lots of great food and merchandise vendors. Again, a completely free event. We invite all the public to attend. We will have the free park and ride shuttle service from Riverside Stadium to downtown Victoria. We are looking, of course, still for volunteers. We'll accept volunteers through the event. We appreciate all the support of our great volunteers and, of course, our sponsors who we could not do the festival without. More information, including our full schedule, can be found at bootfest.org. And again, we just invite the entire public to come out to Boot Fest this weekend.
Hey, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I think we have a proclamation?
Yes. This is a proclamation related to the 2020 decennial census. And it reads in part, "Whereas the next decennial census will be taken in the year 2020, and political representation to the United States House of Representatives, state legislatures, and local governments and federal funding is all determined by the decennial census. And the city of Victoria recognizes the equal importance of each resident in the 2020 census count. And whereas the city of Victoria desires to enter into a partnership with the U.S. Census Bureau, and whereas the city of Victoria understands that its primary role in this partnership is to formulate a complete count committee that should include but is not limited to the following subcommittees: government, education, media, faith-based religious organizations, community-based organizations, and businesses. Therefore, I, Rowley McCoy, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 2020 census as a top priority for all elected and appointed officials and encourage full support and participation of this community in achieving an accurate and complete count through the formulation of a complete count committee. And it is signed today, the first day of October 2019, by Mayor Rowley McCoy."
Thank you very much. I can't stress the importance of this action. To get an accurate count, census count, has many ramifications for our city. It opens up a lot of possibilities for additional federal funding and many, many other things. But it's imperative that we get a true and accurate count of how many citizens, how many people we have in the city of Victoria. So we're working with other groups. I've already talked to the media about public service ads, different groups, and where it's going to be a big effort to make sure that we get an accurate count on our census. So I'd appreciate everybody pitching in in that effort. It's vitally important. So is there any, are there any other things from council tonight?
I'd like to say something. Tonight is National Night Out. There are 37 parties. I'd like to thank all those people that are putting on the parties. It's a lot of work. I'd like to thank the police department. I'd like to thank the fire department. I'd like to thank Officer Turner. And everybody have a great time.
Thank you.
Very good.
I have one item. I've been receiving a lot of complaints lately about the internet service provided by Suddenlink and call wait times and everything else. And everyone that I speak to seems to be frustrated by intermittent service that's been going on for the past month or two. And I was wondering, since they have a franchise agreement with the city of Victoria, if there's someone on staff that could maybe reach out to Suddenlink and see if there's some real issues from a, you know, is it wiring in the city? Is it, what's going on that has so many problems?
I'd like to answer the first part of that question with regards to citizens' citizens' general belief that Suddenlink has a franchise agreement with the city of Victoria. That used to be the case, but it no longer is the case. I get phone calls in my office, not uncommonly, where people are complaining about either the channel lineup on their TV or their bill or whatever else. And the general complaint is, can you do something about that? It used to be true that Suddenlink had a franchise agreement with the city of Victoria to operate within the city. They don't anymore. That was all taken over by the state franchise agreement. And that is now, they have an agreement directly with the state. And the city does still receive some of the revenue from that that we used to receive, but we no longer have any control over Suddenlink whatsoever. Now, there may still be an opportunity for some outreach efforts. And if Mr. Garza would like to address someone who might be able to have a relationship with that. But we no longer have any legal control over them.
We can certainly look into speaking with somebody just to find out what's going on. So we can certainly take that as an action item.
Thank you.
I think it's been going on for more than the last month or so. I've heard things four or five months ago.
Well, I'm a customer myself, too.
It's annoying. I've had a lot of cellphone dropage in the last several weeks.
At least there's choices.
And, but I was told that they're working on towers and my only comment to them, share that with the public, please. So anyway, it is frustrating.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes?
Yeah, it's really more of a policy question. A body of seven, if we get invited to an event where there's discussion going on, and it may pertain to city business, it may not, what are the generalized rules for this body to show up in regards to really the Open Meetings Act?
You're asking, for a generalized answer to a very complicated question, and I'll be happy to give you the shortest answer I can.
It's National Night Out, so that'd be appreciated.
I understand. We were laughing before the meeting that I used to do three-hour-long trainings on the Open Meetings Act, and there really is that much information to share. The general rule is, if a quorum of the body is discussing city business, then it is a meeting, and that meeting needs to be posted. But there are a lot of exceptions to that rule. And one of them is a social function. So for example, if a majority of council were to show up at the chamber luncheon that's going to take place, is that next week? Dr. Hines is giving his presentation. And all happen to sit at the same table, you have a quorum present there, and there happens to be a discussion at the table about city business, as long as it's merely incidental to the social function that's happening there, that's not a meeting. And so it's completely within an exception. A regional workshop is another exception. So it is a complicated question. The general rule is, if a quorum shows up, it can be a meeting. The way that we can protect city council from being accused of having an illegal meeting is let me know about those things. I know that Clarissa frequently will take a poll to see how many council members are planning on attending events that she knows about. And if we're aware of a majority of council members attending those meetings, we can post it as a city council meeting. And then there's no violation that takes place.
Okay.
So the easy answer is, if you have a question, call my office or call Clarissa's in the city manager's office, and we will work to make sure that there's not a violation that takes place.
Okay. I know that there was a meeting here in regards to homelessness that I read in the paper that I think a couple of people up here were at, I believe. But it stated in there that all of us were invited, and I certainly wasn't. So I know that I, just bringing this up, I just wanted to make sure that if all seven weren't in violation. I want to keep everything on the up and up.
Absolutely. And in a situation like that, where we're having a hypothetical discussion, it's hard for me to answer the specifics about whether or not that's an Open Meetings Act violation. And so that's why I encourage everyone, give me a phone call on the front end. We can talk through what's likely to happen at the meeting and see if it fits into one of the exceptions.
But there obviously must have been a miscommunication in the fact that I know that I was not invited to the meeting. I can't speak for any other council members.
And I have a corollary to that because I was invited, but I was not aware that other council members were invited. I was not able to attend, but had I attended and realized when I walked in the door that all of council was there, I quite possibly would have excused myself and left.
Let me give you a strategy.
And so the public needs to understand that.
For all council members, if you wind up at an event and you look around and you count three other noses, there's a quorum of four people there, you can all be there without violating the law, unless there is a discussion of city business. And the law defines that phrase, deliberation is the word the statute uses, to be a two-way communication. All right? I'm going to use bad names here. Let's say Jeff should, I didn't say bad names, I'm sorry. I was going to make a bad example. That was a bad slip of the tongue. All right, sorry, Jeff. So I want to use Jeff as a bad example. Let's say that a quorum is present, and Jeff asks the question, should we raise taxes next year? Clearly an issue of city business. And no one responds to him. That is only a one-way communication, and it is therefore not a violation of the act. Okay? So if you are ever at a social function, and another member of council asks you a question, and you are unsure whether or not this might violate the act, simply respond by saying, I don't think we can discuss that here. If it's not a two-way communication, it's not a violation of the act, and we don't have to worry about those accusations.
There's a distinction if you're an observer or a participant. If you go to an event and you're there to observe what's going on, and you don't participate in any of the conversation. If there's a...
If there is a discussion going on where a quorum of council members are present and no council member speaks, you're only receiving information, that is also not a meeting.
And I just want to briefly add.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Since we're on this topic, I want to real soon have a workshop on that. Because the explanation...
You mean the educational workshop?
Yes.
On the open meetings?
On open meetings. He said, there's a three-hour class on this. And we're getting the three-minute class. And the reason is, is I want to know in this meeting what qualifies for quorum and what qualifies as a two-way communication. Because there are meetings going on around town concerning topics that we're discussing in here. We give money to different organizations. And in these meetings, from what I've heard, that's being discussed. You know, what's the city's, you know, a position on this? How are we, you know, going to give?
Funded.
Are we going to get funding? And also in the paper, there was two different occasions where they said council was invited, but only two people showed up. I never got invitation to either one of those meetings. So something has to happen here. I mean, we can't be going to these meetings expecting a full-fledged discussion, well, what are you going to do, Councilman District 1? What are you going to do, Council District 2? That's a two-way communication. And something, we have to pin this down. You know, if we're going to be getting invited to these meetings concerning these topics, city business, which it is, we got to know how to handle this.
Yeah. One of the things that I want to add, just from a process standpoint, to just facilitate all of that, is if we all share the same message to all of these entities that if they are interested in inviting all of council, that they should send that communication to my office.
Yes.
So that my office can distribute that information to you, whether in the form of the read file that you receive at every meeting or via email. But that way, we can at least be aware of what's going on. Because oftentimes, us as staff, you know, don't even know that these meetings are going on either.
Exactly.
And so we also don't know if there's a potential for an open meetings violation or not because we ourselves don't know what's going on. And so I would encourage everybody that might be listening, or even just encourage you to share with the different organizations, to just spread the message to send us that information in our office, ideally, at least a couple of weeks in advance. Because we can't do last-minute invites because, as you know, we can't post meetings last minute either, in case we wanted to do that just to safeguard the appearance of your participation in the meeting. So we really do need to receive this information at least a couple of weeks in advance, if not further. I know a lot of you are working professionals, and so I know that your schedules are busy. So a couple of weeks might not even be enough time.
Sometimes it's difficult.
And so people just need to send us that information so we can help coordinate y'all's participation.
And with regard to the training, Councilman Delgarza, I encourage all council members to get training, and I'm willing to put one on if you'd like me to. I would also remind you, remember back to when you were first elected, one of the things you had to do was the online training. And that training is still available. You can go back to the Attorney General's website at any time. It's a one-hour course on the Attorney General's website. And if you'd like, I'll send everyone an email tomorrow with a link to that, if you'd like a refresher course.
I'd like to really echo what Mr. Garza said because sometimes we are, a lot of us are professionals, and we'll be approached by somebody that we know. They invite us to a meeting. I don't immediately go to, you're asking me because I'm on city council. And I need to train myself to do that, to stop being social with anyone. And if they ask me to do something, think first they're asking me because I'm on council. And so it really would be helpful to all of us if those invitations came from the city manager's office because then we would be very clear what role we were being asked to play.
Exactly. Don't sell yourself short. You're a likable person. No, it's just my position.
Any other items from council?
I'd like to say that I was invited, but I think that came through Clarissa to go this morning to the Brothers in Arms program that we started in Victoria. And I want to congratulate the Victoria Fire Department. They're doing an awesome job. We are forerunners in this program. This program is going to have them carry type O blood in the ambulances for emergencies and to be able to help save lives. And I was very, very honored to go and speak to the guys this morning. So thank you, Chief, and thank you, Fire Department. Thank you, Chief Hunter, too.
I was there also, and Josie gave a very nice talk. And I'd like to echo what she's saying. Our Fire Department EMS section is really progressing ahead by getting blood on the ambulances. It took, what, a year and a half to get this done because of all the rules and regulations. We have accomplished something big, huge.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned that because I was able to speak to the, at the Blood and Tissue Center about it. I was unable to be there, and I'm so pleased that you were. Things like this are huge. Because I asked him specifically, is this something you would expect to find in a city the size of Victoria? This service for healthcare? And he indicated to me that it wasn't, that normally you only find this level of care in larger cities. So when we think about Victoria, we need to think about all the little things that we do extremely well in Victoria. Because the cumulative effect of all these little things that we do extremely well is big news. And it needs to be echoed to people in our community and others of what we have to offer in Victoria, Texas. And like you said, Councilman, that's a huge issue, huge. And I'm very proud that Victoria has taken that step, and I commend the Fire Department for it. So thank you very much.
We're just the second community in the nation that's doing this. So that was a big, big accomplishment.
It's really, it's really, it's really big stuff.
Yes.
Big stuff. And we need to echo it and let people know how important these things are. So thank you again. Bringing that up. Any other items from council? Hearing none, we'll move into citizens' communication. This time, we allow citizens to come forward for five minutes and speak on any issue of concern to you. We do ask that if you're here to speak to an item that's listed under a public hearing, that you reserve your comments for that public hearing. So having said that, is there anyone that wants to approach and speak to council? Any citizen? Seeing none, we'll move into public hearings.
Item C1 is a resolution supporting the abandonment of a portion of Stolt Street between Houston Highway and Ben Jordan Street for the purpose of constructing a signalized intersection at Houston Highway and Azalea Street, realigning HEB's driveway, constructing a cul-de-sac on Stolt Street, and declaring an effective date.
I will now open a public hearing on this matter. Is anyone here to speak to this matter? Please step forward.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor. My name is Richard Logan. I'm here to talk a little bit about the Stolt Street issue. Stolt Street, as many of y'all know, is a very short street, about a quarter of a mile, maybe six blocks long. Runs basically pretty parallel to the Houston Highway at a little angle. Closing it at this one end, I've got some concerns about, and I'll share those with you now. One, the businesses that are along Stolt Street that operate primarily on Stolt Street, not on the Houston Highway, are located at the west end of Stolt Street. The end where y'all are discussing shutting it down and closing that. There also is an issue in my mind that this is a detriment to a lot of those businesses where they close that down. It's not going to be as convenient for our clients, customers, whatever, to access our businesses. In my case, I own the Lone Star Car Wash, and it is the only entity, I think, that provides access to both Stolts and to Houston Highway on a nice concrete area. That has been a little bit of a problem in the past for traffic coming through there, cutting through. I think this will exacerbate that issue and make that considerably a higher level of concern. Some of y'all will remember, it hadn't been, I don't know, maybe three, four years ago, we had a small toddler at the car wash that was run over by a big Hummer, killed, squashed, gone. I wasn't there when that happened, but I came afterwards. The carbs had been removed. But the puddle of blood that was left there for that small child left a really big impression on me. And I think it's a legitimate concern that if we shut down one end of that, that it's going to create a lot more traffic through there and the possibility of other such incidents happening. I would like to see the engineers for the state and for the city re-look at that and see if there's not a way, it looks to me like they could line that up if they wanted to, to perpendicular entrance to Rio Grande. And while I love HEB, my grocery store, and that's where I go, I do think we ought to consider something that either improves or does not diminish a dozen or so businesses in favor of one business that's being helped by this. So I would ask that y'all re-look at this with the highway department and your own engineering staff and see if we can come up with some sort of a conclusion as to how we can do this where it works for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is it possible for Donald?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, Donald, I think has some information he could share with us to refresh everybody's memory. I know it's been some time. The last time I heard this discussed, I was actually sitting in the audience. So it's been a while.
Do you want to close public hearing?
So let me, is there anyone else that wants to speak to this matter during the public hearing? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And Mr. Reese, if you could give your short presentation.
Sure. I will try to definitely keep this short. So before we get too far into it, I want to give you kind of a little background. I wanted to let city council know that this is something that we've looked at several times over the last years, several years. About five years ago, when we looked at it, we looked at closing Stolt Street. And at the time, it was not pursued due to concerns for restricting access to the businesses in the other areas. Roughly two years ago, in an effort to improve pedestrian safety, city staff worked with AEP to upgrade the lighting in the area. And that project was funded by CDBG. I think it was somewhere around $25,000, $26,000. I don't remember off the top of my head, but there's quite a bit of lighting added to improve nighttime visibility. More recently, as a result of two more accidents at that intersection of Azalea and Stolts and Rio Grande, or Houston Highway, I should say, the city's traffic management team met several times to discuss options for the intersection. The TMT consists of several members of city staff, which come from engineering, traffic control, fire PD, also has members from TechDOT, the county transit authority, and VISD. That TMT group came up with two workable solutions for the intersection. And one was to realign Stolt Street to make it intersect Houston Highway at a 90-degree angle, directly opposite from Azalea, which includes moving HEB's driveway. And the second was to cul-de-sac Stolt Street, which again includes moving HEB's driveway and signalizing the intersection. So we can talk about those two. Oh, and I'm sorry, here's some of the 911 data. So you see the red dot kind of in the middle of the page? That is Azalea and Stolts and Houston Highway. And since 2014, there's been six pedestrian auto accidents. One of those was a fatality. So moving into the options, the realignment option. You can see up here, we're looking to take out Stolt Street where it intersects and bring it down here. And then again, HEB would move their driveway and tie it into Stolt Street. The new realignment, cost of that to the city for the Stolt Street part was $340,000. The city sidewalks, which I'll talk about a little bit later, about $160,000. TechDOT share to signalize that intersection would be about $400,000. And HEB's would be about $260,000. I have a note on that first cost there because this section or this option does not include any right-of-way costs at this time, or does it include any condemnation costs? And I bring that word up only because I know that HEB is not in favor of this option. This option really hinders what they can do with their land in the future, as far as future development. In addition, this layout here, as it is, is fairly problematic just from a geometry standpoint. That's a pretty tight radius for large trucks. So it'd be very difficult to make this work. I'm sorry, any questions about that option?
What do you mean? It's a, the last thing you just said, it's a tight radius for large trucks? Because then you zoomed ahead, but it looks like it's for HEB, it's the same, isn't it?
Well, when you're talking about a truck trying to come in here, this radius is kind of tight.
She's looking at it on her monitor.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If you look up, I'm sorry, if you look down here, this radius is pretty tight right in here to make a large truck make a turn off of Stolts going towards Houston Highway.
But it wouldn't necessarily do that because when we cul-de-sac it, it would come in.
This is a realignment, not the cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sac option is next.
Right. But if you cul-de-sac it, they'll have to come in off of Houston Highway.
But I'm not talking about the HEB trucks. I'm talking about trucks that come in from Stolt Street to those businesses. So if a truck is serving, a large truck is serving one of the businesses off of Stolt Street, they would go back out to Ben Jordan and exit that way.
Okay. It just, it seems like they're not going to have any choice with the cul-de-sac option. And so it didn't make sense to say that they wouldn't be able, you know, it would be difficult for them because there's another option. That was...
I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't think I'm following you.
I'm not, I'm probably not making sense. Go on with your presentation.
Okay.
If I may, all of that property that we see to the east of HEB over, that is owned by HEB?
That's correct, yes, sir. So moving into the cul-de-sack option, there again, cul-de-sack right here, right next to it, you end up tearing that part of the street out. HEB realigns right here. This is just their, this is not a truck route. This is typically just a customer route. This is just their normal customer business. And then they'd remove this, and then this area right here would be where TechDOT would signalize. So again, this, this cost, the cul-de-sack cost would be about $140,000 to the city. City sidewalks, again, would be about $160,000. TechDOT and HEB's share would remain the same. And after talks with HEB, recent talks with HEB, they, they are in favor of this option and have agreed to pay for their associated costs if this is a route city chooses to go.
I have a question. Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Both options require a light right there?
Yes, ma'am. Both, as it stands right now, to make this work, it needs to be signalized.
Okay.
Is there, have there ever been any traffic counts on Stolt's? To see what, how much traffic actually goes there?
Yes, I, I looked at a traffic count. I think it was from 2018. It was a little over 1,000 a day? But I think it was 1,027, if I remember correctly. I'm sorry, Julie, do you have a better number?
I don't have the exact numbers. TechDOT did take traffic counts of both the HEB driveway and Stolt Street, and I wasn't able to get those exact numbers today, but in talking to TechDOT on the phone, the HEB driveway traffic counts were more than triple of what those were on Stolt's.
And so that little triangle that remains there is still HEB property? Where the cul-de-sack is?
Yes, that would all be, all be...
So they actually own the property on Stolt's?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, you're talking about...
Who owns that triangle?
This triangle right here is the mobile home property?
Palm Harbor.
Palm Harbor.
And there's no opportunity, that would be too close to have an exit 90-degree out there instead of the cul-de-sack, based upon the traffic counts?
Yes, too, yes, sir, it's too close to the intersection.
By TechDOT standards?
That's correct.
Are there any other opportunities up Stolt's for a crossover if right-of-way could be acquired?
I would think that the only other option that you would, could use with Stolt's would require a median, and I think that would further restrict... Oh, we're talking about further back to the east?
Yeah, up toward the east. It wouldn't take you too far back.
Not without...
Not, not, yes. We'd have to require property. That's all I'm asking. Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm backcasting. Couple, a few of us sat through this leadership seminar yesterday and today. Long story short, it has me thinking about the implications of this option. So currently, there are trucks that go down Stolt's for the businesses that are off of Stolt's, correct?
Correct.
And when we say trucks, we mean...
Large 18-wheelers, delivery, delivery trucks.
So if we cul-de-sack, is that cul-de-sack big enough for an 18-wheeler to turn around?
We would make sure that it's, it's got enough room to make that radius.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Is it big enough for a mobile home being pulled?
I couldn't tell you that right off the bat, top of my head, but we could, we could look at that and figure out what they need and try to make it work with them.
Ken's over there shaking his head, saying no. Thank you, city engineer, for your input.
They typically, and I've seen them, they typically back their vehicles sometimes across US 59, Business 59, and get into their site that way. That there's the cul-de-sack...
I know that they also use Stolt Street when they're positioning some of those, those manufactured homes, and I have a concern with doing the cul-de-sack route that when they're doing that, they're shutting off all the businesses to the west.
And they currently do that, too, when they pull...
Right, but they have another way to come in.
Right.
Are we talking about businesses to the east?
Mr. Barker mentioned that to me.
Yes. Yeah, so it totally shut off businesses when they're, they're doing that.
Let me, let me just make sure. There are some logistical things that we definitely would have to work out if this is an option that the council were to move to. I want to make sure y'all understand that this is just a, this is just a resolution of support. At some point, we still have to come back to council with a construction project. It's going to be $140,000, so this is by no means is a done deal.
I'm, I'm not in favor of this option.
It looks like the difference is $200,000 of city expense and possibly HEB not, not giving us a hard time on a condemnation. Those are the two differences between the project. It's the same money to everyone else.
That's the two, two big differences, yes, ma'am.
So if, if either of these options are, we proceed with, will we be actively writing tickets for jaywalking? Because this would be a signalized intersection, and the next intersection over would be Ben Jordan, and it's signalized. And we've talked about before on jaywalking laws, if you cross between two signalized intersections, that is considered jaywalking.
Right.
And if we're really going to be serious about doing this for pedestrian safety, I would say that we would need to be serious about writing tickets for people wandering across the middle of the road there.
Well, let's use that as a segue before we talk about the sidewalks.
Sure. Well, so the sidewalks that you're talking about there, moving into the next, I'm sorry, this is another layout. This is HEB got, had their engineers kind of lay out their parking lot or their property. So the sidewalks that we were talking about would be paid for with CDBG funds, and that's basically coming down east, is that East San Antonio Street? And then, and then heading south on Azalea Street in order to give those pedestrians from that neighborhood a, a good walking path to get to that signalized intersection.
So it encourages people going to the signal?
So as right now, what they do is they'll come through this neighborhood and come straight down...
Theoretically.
Yeah. Yeah, theoretically. So what they're doing right now is they're coming through this vacant property here, through some fences that aren't up, and then crossing right down in this area. And what we would like to do is bring them this way, encourage them to come this way to a signalized intersection with brand-new sidewalks.
Donald, what's, what's the distance between the light at Laurent and that light proposed at Azalea?
I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head. Ken, would you happen to know that?
I'm just trying to figure a flow. As I drove down that road last night and seeing the volume of traffic about 5:00, and I know that timing of signals is an issue, and if it ever got off, it would be...
Right, right.
Bad.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
And I don't know if we ever have any lights that close in proximity elsewhere.
You have any examples of that, Ken? Like a... Yeah, Hoover is pretty close to Navarro, I mean to Loop 463.
And, and that shouldn't be an issue with just timing it and utilizing that system that we have. Should not. And if, and if we have to adjust, we'll adjust, just like the instances that were brought up a few council meetings ago. You know, we have the ability to adjust.
I just want to bring it up.
Also remember, we have the Houston Highway sidewalk project that'll be letting in the spring. With that, you know, it's, it's tied into the Navarro-Median project, and there'll be a full retiming. So if we can time this right, we can potentially add in a retiming study on Houston Highway with, if this, this signal and those sidewalks, the construction ends about the same time.
I think this sidewalk's fine for encouragement, but I don't think it's going to change any behavior. It's much shorter to walk straight through the field and straight across.
And there also is, there also has been an effort from code enforcement standpoint to ensure that these fences are up.
I was just going to bring that point up.
And so, you know, I guess you could always have Spider-Man, you know, climbing it, trying to get to HEB.
Yeah, I believe some of these fences back here are down, and that's where they're using gaps, and so they're, they're crawling through there.
Donald, do you have a mouse or a cursor that you can use where we can see it? Because this is a real inconvenience, having to turn back and forth, and we're getting confused up here. There's got to be a cursor on your monitor that you can use that we can see. I've seen it before.
I'm like Mr. Bogdanak. I don't think, the only thing that changes habits is through enforcement of that jaywalking deal. I mean, you start giving out enough tickets, the word will get around, and unfortunately, that's probably the most effective way. You'll never stop all of them, but at least it'll, it'll make someone think twice whether they want that ticket or not.
Well, I know something has to be done because that's high traffic, foot traffic. When I drive back and forth to work, I see it constantly. People are constantly standing in the middle of the street in front of TDECU trying to cross, constantly.
And I don't, I don't know if a thousand cars a day, if that's accurate, but that's, that's, that's quite a bit of traffic. And I know for a fact that Mid Coast Electric is an old-time company, and they've been there an awfully long time. And they're a very solid company in our community, and I just hate to, to inconvenience, inconvenience them as well as Mr. Logan, who has invested their money in their businesses. Granted, they're not as big as HEB, but they're still viable businesses, and they, they need to be considered.
Yeah, this is not a, this is not a recommendation we bring to you lightly. We understand the consequences of it, absolutely.
The cul-de-sack is also a DOT recommendation, correct?
It is.
I will say, we haven't made any motions, but the way it's written up, it's for constructing a cul-de-sack on Stolt Street.
That's our recommendation, yes, sir.
The way it's written.
Can I go back to the sidewalk for just a minute?
Sure.
What's the condition along Rio Grande, along Houston Highway? If people, instead of taking our new sidewalk, cut through, as is happening now, is there a sidewalk from that spot on Houston Highway back to Azalea Street such that our signalized light would still work?
Yeah. There's currently some gaps in there, but that's the sidewalk project that Julie mentioned that will be happening at the end, towards the end of this current year.
Okay.
Will fill those gaps along this corridor.
So that sidewalk will be improved?
Yes, ma'am.
Which could encourage people to go to Azalea, regardless of how they got it?
I hope, I hope it does, absolutely.
And even though the item is written in the way that you just read, it doesn't mean that council still can't provide direction as a unit to get, for us to know what to do next, right? So if you're not in favor of improving it as written, well, then don't approve it, but provide feedback to us on what you would like to see to continue this conversation, or if you want the conversation to die, we'll just kill it the way that it stopped a few years ago.
Would a median from that intersection going to, back to the east, to where if you did have an exit of Stolt's at the end of that triangle, would that change TechDOT's opinion about the distance so that you would limit, if you'd come in and go in one direction in and out?
Would that be a, you'd say it would be a right turn only, then?
Basically, that's what it would become.
Yeah, so...
And then it wouldn't block people off, but it would somehow limit the ability for people to go across the lanes at that, close to that intersection. Is that a possibility to have, to speak to TechDOT about?
That is a, that is a possibility. I want to say that we've actually, we did actually talk to TechDOT about that, and there, if that's the way they, they went, it would take a little bit longer to get that done. The reason I say that is because this is a, a pot of money that they applied for, for a specific safety project. And so if they, if we end up not doing this project, they have to go back and reapply for that money, come back with a new safety project. So it's going to take a couple of years, but my gut would be that they're going to go from Laurent to Ben Jordan, solid median, no breaks.
And that's not going to be good for Palm Harbor or the other mobile home place because when they pull in and out, that median's going to hamper them from pulling there.
I'm just talking about just far enough for that intersection, for that deal, not, not the whole way.
I don't, I don't believe that they would leave a gap at Azalea or at Stolt's. They would, they would take it all the way across, all the way.
I'd rather pursue the first option, the, the realignment versus the cul-de-sack. I think we need to do something there, but...
But did, did you not say HEB also wants a cul-de-sack?
HEB is in favor of the cul-de-sack. They, their indication was that they are not in favor of the, of the realignment, mainly because it, it takes a lot of their property. Go ahead.
So in our talks with HEB, they're actually not in favor of doing anything, but with TechDOT's discussion of a median going from Laurent all the way to Ben Wilson, they realized that, you know, if, if, if their choices between signaling their driveway, paying for that cost, or a median, that is why they're in favor of the cul-de-sack, because again, it does take all of their property, and then it allows their driveway to be signalized and doesn't cause a median at this time.
And this is TechDOT's engineers who came up with this? Or the City Victoria engineers?
It was a combination with the, the TMT meeting, which is TechDOT, city staff.
So in any of the options, is there an option, is HEB, are they going to provide right-of-way either, for either option that's chosen?
They provide right-of-way for the cul-de-sack.
But not necessarily the other option?
That's correct.
We'd have to buy it.
Yes, yes, ma'am, we would, we'd most likely have to buy that. Yeah, so, and here's the, we can go back to the cost for that, I'm sorry.
And that's where it was $200,000 more, plus whatever the cost is for the condemnation, for the buying of the other property.
Well, if you're looking at these numbers, I, I would say that the 260 that's shown there for HEB, that construction cost would fall to us, plus any cost for right-of-way and any cost occurred for the condemnation proceedings.
If council doesn't feel comfortable making a decision, we'd be happy to just table the conversation and just bring it back at a later date to give everybody more time to...
All right, I'll make a recommendation, we table it till next meeting.
But are we going to give direction on what? Well, after we, after we table it, all right, there's a motion and a second on the floor to table this?
We'd be happy to take direction today, but if you're not ready to do that as a unit...
We'd like to have some of the questions answered about flow...
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
No, that's fine. We're in discussion, okay. I would just, I would like to have some, a few more answers in regards to how this is going to affect existing businesses, and the impact, and, and what are, what are the solutions? I know you brought up that you would look, and this isn't a final, that we would talk about it, but I think before we vote on something, I think we'd like to have some answers before we vote on something.
Could, could you possibly get, again, as a little direction, could possibly be, get a written opinion from TechDOT about a partial median?
Sure.
And the possibility of having an outlet and take that median just so far to control that? Seems to me like if they were ever going to expand the project, they'd just add on to the median and go. I don't understand the big issue if we ask them to look at a unique situation.
Well, I think long-term, a median all along Houston Highway is being discussed. We're discussing it right now in our MTP planning process, a median actually from Main Street all the way out to in front of the airport, broken up into sections. So I think eventually, we'll be looking definitely at more medians along here. The, I think they would be open to a median, partial or not, it's coming up with the funding, because right now, the funding is for the signal. So we'll have to look at the funding option.
Didn't we have a median in that?
Years ago, I can remember one that had palm trees in it.
Yeah, when I was a little girl.
That was in my youth.
How are the people going to turn into HEB? There's going to be a full median there unless we took that light on there. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
People don't turn into HEB that way.
I do when I go to the pharmacy.
Most people exit the HEB pharmacy.
Yeah, but that's the entrance for your pharmacy right there. That's how I go into the pharmacy.
Well, and I don't know if I can, is this on there? I don't know if it's on there.
It is, it's just small.
So part of what HEB is also trying to do towards that end of the store-
It's right here.
Where, yeah, is to add the curbside service.
Curbside location.
So HEB is also looking at this as an, as a investment to expand the services that they're providing there, and this more than likely would be the entrance for people that are going for curbside, because that's where they would put it. You could see there on the map where the parking spaces would be. And so if we look at this from HEB's viewpoint, is that if there's a way to access HEB from that end, well, then there, there's no need for a partnership for a signal, right? So HEB's motivation for this is, is they don't want there not be the ability to turn left into HEB. And so they're willing to participate in an endeavor to ensure they have access from that side, because the alternative is no access.
So you could only go right?
Right turn only.
Yeah.
This is a pretty costly-
They would have both options if the, if the median just went from that intersection to a possible cut-through exit from Stolt's further down.
So we'll, we'll have to go back and ask Text Dot for, sorry, is, I went too far, is, they will look at any extension of Stolt's through that triangular portion of Palm Harbor's property as a driveway, and so we would have to look and see if there's appropriate spacing from the proposed signal to allow, you know, a right-turn-only driveway, and if we can add median as part of the signal project for the, the turn lanes and base, rather than a full median from Laurent all the way to Ben Wilson.
And I just want to add, too, that, you know, part of the purpose of this exercise is to get policy direction from council. We appreciate the feedback, the specific feedback, but ultimately, council needs to make a policy decision. Do you want a signal there or not? If the answer is yes, then there are options, we'd be happy to explore different options. Does council want a cul-de-sack, or do they not? And how we get there, we would be happy to work with the experts and the subject matter experts, the engineers, to develop alternative options if that's what council wants, but I don't want us to lose sight on what we're seeking from you, which is the policy direction on this issue, not so much the intricacies of where a street end begins, or this, or that. Because that's what matters more to us so that we know how to proceed with bringing something back to you.
I have no, I have no issue with creating a safer crossing for pedestrians. If, if, if the expense is in there, we're talking about a lot of money to provide that. I think I agree with Mr. Balknight that it's going to probably take some enforcement to make that a reality. After it's done, I have no issue with that personally about it or the signalization. All I want to know is, is there another option for the, for Stolt's where we can take it out of there without really encumbering HEB? Just one more thing to look at, and Text Dot might shoot it down with logical reasoning, but I think it's important for the businesses there that we have asked these questions to make sure that we're, we're doing everything within our power to not affect their business.
Also, we have to put pedestrian safety first.
Yeah, and it sounds like-
We have people getting killed and injured, they are walking, these are people who are, don't have the, the luxury of a car. You know, they're crossing, we're getting people killed and injured, we have to do something here. No if, ands, or buts.
I agree.
A crossing has to be done. Every day, there's people in the middle of Rio Grande trying to cross, and I've seen elderly people trying to cross where I have tried to even stop, which I couldn't because of the traffic, to help an elderly lady across this highway. We have to do something. If not, we're missing a valuable opportunity. Text Dot has done some very good work, their engineers have, and for us to just second-guess them is kind of a little concerning.
I agree.
There's a significant cost difference between the two options, with HEB willing to pick up their portion of the cost on the cul-de-sack option.
Only on the cul-de-sack, not on the realignment?
Yes, ma'am, is what we've discussed so far.
I think there's a motion on the floor to table this-
Table it.
Until a couple of weeks, and I think we can certainly get that answer. I don't think anybody is taking exception to the signalized crossing.
It's okay with the signalized crossing. I just have one more question. Okay, if we're going to have that median going all the way across, that means, because this is the way I go into HEB, over here, the other entrance, are we going to be able to turn left, or we're going to have to go all the way and turn around on Laurent to get into HEB?
If it's signalized-
There's not going to be- There's not going to be a median right now.
No, not through the intersection.
If it's signalized, there will be a break in the median for, for full movement in and out of the driveway and Azalea Street.
Right, left, it'd be four turns.
Yeah, because you just said it was going to be a median that was going to continue.
If there's no signal.
If there's no, but if there's a signal, you're going to have a turn, left-turning lane right there and the other?
Yes, we always have median breaks at, at signals.
Okay, fine, then I'll, you just got to figure out on Stolt's, okay? Tell them to work on Stolt's and we'll be okay. I'm fine with it.
Again, there's a motion on the floor, any further discussion? This is the motion to table.
How long are we tabling?
No second, was it? Till the next meeting?
Yeah, there was a second.
Definitely a time.
How long are we tabling it?
Postpone to a definite time.
The next meeting.
To the next meeting.
So we get some answers from Text Dot?
Will we get answers in a week, I mean, two weeks?
Yes, so my understanding of the question is, instead of terminating Stolt Street into a cul-de-sack, could it, at its current location, where it's drawn, immediately turn that right turn so that it would be a right turn only in and out of Stolt's onto Business 59 with adding a median just at that intersection to, to make that movement be the right turn in and out?
Is that something that Text Dot would consider? If not, then we'll have our answer in two weeks.
I think it's an easy answer, just finding out the required spacing, because again, they will treat that as a driveway permit, basically, so we just need to see if it's far enough away.
And someone's going to have to contact Palm Harbor if they're willing to sell. They may not be willing to sell any land for an exit. They're already landlocked now.
Well, there's probably a little in it for them because they do block other people, and if they're good neighbors, and, and I don't think it's a problem right now, because I've been told it doesn't matter because it's intermittent, but there's two ways in and out. If we do it, it could become a problem. So, you know, there might be motivation for them to consider, you know, to do that, but, but the first thing we have to determine, is it something that Text Dot would even consider doing? And so-
I'm not following, you're talking about a median so that it's right turn only, but how far is your median going? Because-
Would only go down to the, to where that intersection would occur. It would go past it where you can't cut across the traffic leaving Stolt's.
Okay, so that basically the, the signal doesn't, then it, then we don't do the signal?
No, you have to have the signal at the intersection.
Yeah, no, he mean, he means if, if you did a right, a 90-degree turn somewhere along here, make that a right turn exit and a right turn in with a median here to prevent people from going left.
That would, that would bog up traffic at the intersection, at the light.
And do it, and the cul, basically, and the stalks there.
Because the issue you'd run into is that it might be too close to the light, so that's why the idea of making that shortcut-
It would be like a cul-de-sack with an exit.
And still signalizing Stolt's.
Correct.
Absolutely, yes. We still have the motion to table and a seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor of tabling this until the next meeting. Say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign?
Opposed.
Can you get that?
There are eight items on the consent agenda tonight that'll be approved by a single vote. They are, first, the approval of minutes of the special meeting of September 10, 2019, and the regular meeting of September 17, 2019. Second is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 to update fees for services administered by the Development Services Department, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. Third is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 to update fees for services administered by the Victoria Fire Department, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. Fourth is an ordinance adding fees to Chapter 24 to charge mitigation fees for the deployment of Victoria Fire Department resources, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. Fifth is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 to update fees for services administered by the Victoria Public Library, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. Sixth is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 to update fees for services administered by the Public Works Department, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date. Seventh is a resolution approving the purchase of city fleet vehicles and other equipment from various vendors utilizing government cooperative contracts for a total amount of $1,724,163.29, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchases and declaring an effective date. And item number eight is a resolution approving the city's annual scheduled purchase of computers, computer software, computer peripheral equipment, maintenance contracts, security equipment, supplies, and phones through various cooperative purchasing contracts in the amount of $747,665.04, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete such purchases and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? I think that's all the business before council tonight.
That's all I have.